How am I going to get out of this job?
I'm doing great.
I'm going to use an old one, I think. I've got one.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. Maybe when I ran for school. I don't know.
So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those watching at home. This is a, we have a, I'm not calling to order the Board of Selectmen meeting, but instead, we have a brief ceremony to present our former colleague Angela Forenzy with his official selectmen portrait, which we've asked him to come here with his beautiful wife to hang on the wall of honor to our left here with all of the former members of the board. And certainly want to thank him on behalf of the Board of Selectmen in town of Belmont for his dedicated years of service. I enjoyed serving with you for eight years and, well, not for eight years, but thank you for your eight years of service and I certainly enjoyed the service to your community. So Angela, with that, if you can come forward, it's a privilege for me to present to you your official portrait. Congratulations as a member of the Board of Selectmen. You look great in it. Ralph or anyone?
Yeah.
As you officially. Paul, will you go ahead to the camera? All of you go ahead to the camera. Can you get it? Thank you, my word.
I'm doubling five in here.
Okay. Thank you. There. There. Thank you very much. It's a privilege to work with you very much. Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. We're glad to have you. Was your hanging us here?
Yes. I'll have to hang you in the air.
I'll give to you both of you. I apologize for not forwarding this before, but I did make copies for both of you. David's killed initial edits to the vision contract. If you want a few minutes to look at, I want to look at that. We sent him a standard contract and we're going to talk about this in the next session because it might be helpful to do a comparison. Does that make sense?
Uh huh.
Okay. Captain Mahoney still?
Captain Mahoney, even as we speak, is waiting her way to one of the areas to get to Sandhurst by tomorrow. She left four o'clock this morning to go to her Jackson, pick up her paperwork to Miami, Atlanta. And I'm going to call this. Yeah. I'm giving you everything.
Thank you, Paul. Good evening. I'm Mark Low, Chair of the Board of Selectmen. It is Monday, July 16, 2012. I'd like to call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting for this evening at 7:01 PM. Our first order of business is any questions from town residents? Okay, seeing none. I'll just briefly describe our agenda this evening. Remaining, our first agenda topic is follow-up on the Underwood Pool discussion from two weeks ago. We also are then meeting with Economic Development Advisory Committee around 7:15, although we may take longer on the pool discussion. We have a number of committee reappointments, I think, tonight we're doing and then think at our next meeting, we intend to appoint new members, although maybe this evening we can bring some new members as well. At 7:45, is this a presentation from someone from Belmont?
Yes.
Our commonplace is coming to present? Okay. At 8:00, we are going into executive session for two purposes. One, to discuss purchase exchange and lease our value of real property and also executive session to discuss collective bargaining negotiations. And we come out of executive session, town administrators report and we have some other actions by consent and actions by writing. So with that, I want to begin with our first order of business, planning for the future of the Underwood Pool. And I would ask Stefan Luscolo, our Director of the Department of Health, and Peter Castenino to please join us. We're also in the audience this evening is the members of the Board of Health, Dr. Alper, who's current chair. I don't know whether Dr. Alper, you want to join us as well?
No.
You can if you want, or you can just comment from there. Okay.
I do have my fellow board members, all the data here.
Well, thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
And our Assistant Director Angela Brock.
Oh, good evening. Well, thank you for coming and lending support to this, a very important topic for our community. So, what do we begin? With you, sir?
Stefan Ross, Director of Health. Follow-up from the last meeting, I had an inspection done by Peter Wheeler, who was the pool subject matter from the Department of Public Health.
Okay.
He came out on the 10th of July with another inspector. He left us with three verbal comments. A report is going to be forthcoming, but it is not ready yet. His comments were that there should be no reinstallation of the diving board. He based that on the 1998 building code design, which we in fact also cited. He also indicated that there should be no diving or other activity on the board, meaning that you can't put a board closer down to the deck. And last thing, you had all asked about a water slide. He indicated the pool would not support a water slide due to various factors. There's recirculation of the, in the splash pool and some other issues, but all those things will be in his report.
Okay.
That's all I have to say about that.
Right. Any questions? So, when do we expect his report?
Probably at the end of this week or next week.
Okay. And I guess just to comment on the 1998 regulation, because I've read some of the information that he sent to us and I know there's been some comments from residents whether we in fact are required to file that or follow that or not, but it seems to me, why wouldn't we follow it? I mean, it's.
That's his recommendation, based on the amount of construction, other changes that have gone in the past. That's his, that's his call. He felt that there was enough work being done in the pool from the '30s up until now to use the most current regulation.
Okay. And that, the 1998, is the most current?
Of the building code, yes.
And his name is Peter Wheeler?
Peter Wheeler. And he's the pool subject matter expert from the Department of Public Health, Community Sanitation Branch.
Okay. Well, thank you for your follow-up on all of these matters, Stefan. We really appreciate that. Thank you very much and to the Board of Health as well for following up on this matter. I do want to comment before Peter goes into, what are our options and alternatives? Because I think this board stands behind trying to find a solution, long-term solution for the pool. Kelly notified me today that at our last meeting, two weeks ago, we did offer to any resident that wanted to have a refund because of the removal of the dime board, that they could in fact do that as of close of business on Friday. And I understand that 14 residents have come for it and asked for a refund. So I just want to let all of you know in the viewing audience that we did honor that commitment and a handful of folks did come forward because of the removal of the dime board to ask for a refund. Went by there today, the pool was loaded, so I think people are still enjoying it. Mr. Castenino, how are you, sir?
Fine. How are you tonight?
Well.
Here's.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The, this is a concept for the Underwood Playground that I have come up with in the last month or so. And it is a result of really three things that connected this plan to provide the idea. The discussion at town meeting about the Community Preservation Act, also the recent CPA legislation that provides a possible funding source for the pool because the legislation was changed that allows for current facilities to be replaced or upgraded, which was, which was not, which was not available before that. And also my, my attendance at the library sighting group. As I sat through these seemingly disconnected items, I was thinking about if the, I for long have thought that one of the problems with the pool, of course, is it's used for two months out of the year and on the list of funding priorities, it wouldn't be high probably with the other needs in the town. But if there is in fact a, a funding source, the question came to me that if we could move the pool to a better area of the site, would we have space for a multipurpose field to replace the field across from Concord Ave, which would then allow for the moving of three or four projects forward?
If you could just stop on that one point, Peter, because I know there's going to be some comments as we move towards further discussion of this issue. And you've said this to, I think, this board and to me as well directly, at least based on your point of view and other sort of, I guess, points of view that you've gotten from consultants, we would not, does not make any sense, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but does it make any sense to continue to cite that pool where it is?
Well, from everything that I know, I'm not a pool expert.
Yeah.
But from my experience with the pool over the last nine years and all the reports I've read and the history that I know about the pool and everyone I've talked to, the one of the problems with the pool is the sighting, it was a great, as I said this last time, it was a great location for a swimming hole, but it's not a great location for, for a concrete pool. And mainly the reason is because of the underground, the level of groundwater. It's very high in that area because it's adjacent to the brook and the forces on the pool, filling the pool, and then when we fill the pool, it drains because the concrete is porous or cracked, no doubt.
Yeah.
The main structure of the pool to hold the water. I mean, I'm sure it's possible to build a pool there, but it would require extraordinary measures to try to keep, keep the area from, from literally being, from dewatering the area adjacent to the brook to try to keep the pool structurally sound as well as solid from, from groundwater intrusion. It's a real problem trying to do that because you're really just basically fighting nature.
Yeah.
So, I, to my knowledge, other than the 1998 Mace study, which I referred to in my discussion a couple of weeks ago about, this discussion that was done, they recommended that it could be sighted there, but they recommended moving it. So if we could move it, then the question gets to be where. Certainly the site, the site is challenging, but one, another location on the site would make sense to me if it was possible. Saying that, saying that, I actually put together the plan. I, I've, the plan that you see in your PowerPoint is right there as well. And I, that is really just two town, old town plans, 10 or 15 years old, that I received from Glenn Clancy and Community Development that I pasted together.
Yeah.
And I did some preliminary work with them just to see if this, this would, this idea would seem, seemed as if it would fit. And there appears to be enough space to replicate the multipurpose soccer field across Concord Ave and possibly add some parking. And let me, I can show you that with my laser pointer here. If you, if you see this.
Can I show it on the screen, Peter, since it's on the screen?
Sure, I can do that. Let me do that.
Don't mind.
No, that's okay. Let me just move over a little. Yes, I can use that as well. This plan actually shows, the plan that's over there, but also shows a field sighted, actually. This, this is the pool as it exists now. This is the bathhouse right here. This is the Underwood Pool site from Concord Ave, this is Concord Avenue. Up here is School Street, so it's a unusually shaped site. If we relocated the pool, if we're able to relocate the pool up here, what's shown here is a bathhouse and an Olympic-sized swimming pool, which I don't think the town would choose to put in, but the point is, that's a very, very large pool.
You could fit Olympic size right there.
You could fit it there with the bathhouse there. For many reasons, I don't think that would be the final choice, but the idea was, was this big enough. And down here where you see this field, the, the architect, the landscape architect that did this just centered it. I would move this field over to, to the right, which would allow, I think, about 60 parking spaces along, along Cottage Street. I also think would move it to the right to further keep it away from the houses.
Right.
Because on the right, if the library exists, still existed or was moved, and the police station was there, it would impact, wouldn't impact residences, of course. The pool also, my, my kind of vision of the pool, and it's just my vision, it certainly has to be vetted out by a, by a professional architect, is I would, I would think about putting the bathhouse kind of in the base of this hill and use it as part of a retaining wall. And I'll get to the elevation differences because clearly that's a challenge. And then have more area for, whatever the town would decide, whether it was an adult pool, a kiddie pool, a spray park, or whatever, that, that would have, that, that idea, that concept would all have to be vetted out as to what the community would want. Certainly, I think, there are some concerns, there's three houses here, the pool would move closer to the houses. I think you could lower the pool enough and provide some screening here for the two months that it's open and minimize the impact on the neighbors. That's certainly a concern, as well as the neighbors across the street, that's a concern as well. The parking here would, would help not only the field and the pool, I think you'd have to provide a few spaces of handicapped accessible parking up near the pool because this facility would all be handicapped accessible, which it is not now, certainly the bathhouse would allow that. The tot lot, which exists right here, would, could either move up here with a little flat area, or you may remember across School Street now up here, now the New Wellington School actually has two tot lots, one on School Street and one on Orchard Street that are brand new. So you could either relocate it, the tot lot from here to there, or just take it out and not replace it.
You wouldn't have to lose the tot lot if you, if we so desired.
You wouldn't have, wouldn't have to.
You wouldn't lose a park, another lot.
You could just move it.
Yeah.
You could also do some other things. You could provide some handicap parking up here and if the bathhouse was up here and enter it from the rear. There are options certainly that the town could look at, but it's only a conceptual plan and a lot of work needs to be done. So, as far as the field goes, this, so there appears to be enough space for the pool and the multipurpose field, and I mentioned the tot lot. This site itself is, the field, the field across the street is approximately 300 feet, the soccer field, 300 feet by 180 feet wide, adding 12 feet around the field for a space, for just extra space for the teams and the goals and things like that. You'd need 324 feet by 204 feet for, to replicate the field across the street. This site, you'd need 204 feet across, this site is 292 feet across. So that's why I say you'd have 60 or 80 feet on, on one side for, I think, two rows of parking, and that's even reducing 20% of the space for some screening and other use. I think when you look at the, the length, the 324 feet, that is what's shown here from here up to about this area. There's, right now, there's a row of mature trees here and the hill starts here, it flattens out here and goes up again. This, this space here, the difference in elevation, because of course this is a hill from Concord Avenue up to School Street, the difference in vertical elevation on this first, first section where the field would be is about 12 feet difference in vertical elevation. So I would expect that you'd flatten this out, raise it along the Concord Ave end and put a couple of terrace walls here. Maybe the lower wall could be used for seating to watch the game, only maybe two and a half feet high. Put another one or two walls there to terrace it and blend it into the landscape. I really think it's possible that a creative landscape architect could really do a nice job with this. As you move this up and as you do some kind of a facility here to replicate the pool in some fashion, that, that section from about here to here is about 14 feet difference in elevation. I would see, vertical feet, I would see again flattening it out and maybe keeping the hill here to keep the pool below the residences to, to, to help screen the pool from the residents as well as any noise from the pool when it was open. Of course, the pool closes, excuse me, by 8:00 at night, so after that, it's quiet.
Right. So it's two months a year. We only open the pool July and August?
Right. Correct. Pretty much. And the remaining section is certainly enough for a tot lot or parking or some other use. Certainly, I don't, we think we'd want to keep some of it as open space.
Yep.
And that difference, that's the steepest part from here to School Street is about 20 feet in vertical elevation, so that's the steepest part here. So, what I did is I actually asked one of, one of our consultants, a landscape architect, to look at this at no cost to the town, and he was willing to do that, just to see if he saw anything that I didn't see, if there was something that was glaring that was not possible. And he came back with this just schematic plan and said, no, I think it is possible. So, I, I was, I felt good about that. There is, I developed a list of, of positives and concerns. Go forward to, please.
There it is.
Yes. This, this here would provide a location to replace the soccer field for the pros' library site from across the street. The soccer field would again, the same, same orientation as across the street, have a north-south orientation, which is preferred. If we could replace the Underwood Pool, possibly with CPA funds, it certainly maintains the intention, the Underwood Pool gift as a town, to use the site as a public.
Could you just stop there for a moment? Didn't you research, you and Ellen, our town clerk?
I did. I researched the deed. The town did not have the deed for this land and the transfer in 1911 and '12 from town meeting, and I did research the deed. And the deed transfers some land from the Underwood family to, to the town and the, the deed states that the Board of Selectmen, they, they wanted to keep it as a public park, but they said in the future, the Board of Selectmen can choose to see how that land is used at their discretion, because I think they were wise enough to see that, who knows what the future will hold for the town.
Right.
So, I did not find any restrictions on.
So is that something we probably, if we, you know, if we decided to move forward here with this concept plan, we'd have the town council take a look at as well, Peter?
I certainly think, just to be sure, but I, I didn't see anything. Certainly it wasn't.
Okay. Well, we were able to find documentation, I think, our town clerk was able to find that from, or you did, or?
Yes, the, the top clerk didn't have it, nor did our assessors, so I sent somebody to the registry of deeds.
Oh, we got it there. Okay. Perfect.
And I have copies of the deeds, yes.
Okay.
It also, the next item is eliminates the past used-to-life pool filtering system, creating a barn pool that obviously would meet today's standards and I think would be more enjoyable for residents.
Diving board as well, right?
It could have diving board if we chose.
Yeah, we chose, so, so chose.
Yes, deeper. Replaces the bathhouse and eliminates all those issues, making it function, more functional, handicapped accessible, more enjoyable as well. Creating, would create a small, I think, handicap parking lot for the pool and increase accessibility. It would utilize the site to relocate the pool, as I mentioned, as we discussed this earlier, to what I think is a more appropriate site. The landscape architect also, there were some borings done around the pool back in the 1988 study, and they found the groundwater between one and a half and five feet deep. And when the library looked about relocating there three or four years ago, again, found the groundwater only about four or five feet deep where the pool is now. So it is very high in that area pretty much consistently. Higher.
Go ahead. I'm just going to ask whether that impacts the field placement at all?
No, I don't, I, I don't think it does because the groundwater never comes, the, the brook never comes above the level of the ground. It hasn't since we rebuilt the grate there 10 or 15 years ago. Received a hazard mitigation, hazard mitigation grant.
Yeah.
And received and rebuilt the grate, and we haven't had a problem with the brook overflowing since that time. And we've had some big storms. Certainly, in an enormous event, a hurricane, all bets are off, but generally speaking, it's not an issue. It used to flood the pool years ago and it was a problem because we'd have to shut the pool down because of that reason. It, oh, what I was, what I was getting to before, before the question was that also the state maintains this database access of underground subsurface conditions that landscape architects use to get a general sense of what's there. And there wasn't anything using that data available from the state. There was nothing that prohibited, no ledge, no unusual soil conditions whether prevent, at least on initial review, this, this concept. Some more positives, I think it more fully utilizes the Underwood site as an asset for the town.
Right.
Certainly it utilizes it for a must-needed sports field adjacent to the high school athletic complex as well as youth soccer, lacrosse and other uses. You may remember the school department expressed concerns about training and transportation for the incinerator site.
Right. In the working group that we've been meeting on this matter.
Yes.
Right.
Yes. The next one is, of course, it eliminates the Title IX concerns that were expressed.
And you have the Chair of the School Committee, now you're head in the audience, so that's great to know.
And I already mentioned the transportation issues. For, for the maintenance issue, creates a field that's adjacent to what we maintain now across the street.
Right.
So that makes it a little more efficient and allows the incinerator, incinerator site to be used for other town benefits, whether we choose to use it for a field for other uses as well. I mean, it's, it just opens up that for additional uses as well as that.
And I think this is in public, you know, and I know we have the title issue to clarify, you know, I want to call it clear. It opens up the possibility for, if we can retain title or clarify the title, to entertain private interests, self, for private interests, which would clearly bring a fair amount of capital funds to our community, which would be terrific.
Some of the concerns are the, of course, as I mentioned earlier, it's a challenging site because of the topography, but I don't think impossible. It eliminates some of the current open space that's there, that's used somewhat, although I don't think it's used greatly to my knowledge. Impacts the neighbors, noise, parking, visual, as I mentioned. It does require the removal of some mature trees in the center. In the tot lot, I mentioned already.
I guess at this point, it's difficult to tell how many would be lost.
I think most of them would have, I think most of them would be lost, but I certainly they could try to save a few of them.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that's possible depending on where, where the, where the walls are installed and that sort of thing exactly.
Exactly.
And eliminates the occasional outdoor ice skating in the lower area. There is some occasional outdoor ice skating in that depressed area right adjacent to Concord Ave, between Concord Ave and the pool. It's not that often because the conditions have to be real. We flood that area, but it has to stay very cold, not a lot of precipitation. Some people use it occasionally, but it's not a, not a major use by any stretch of imagination. Couple other things I'll mention that aren't on my list that have come up since I did this, is certainly, we'd have to discuss this with Conservation Commission because the lower area adjacent to where the, where the brook goes into the grate behind the library, there is the 100, 100-foot rivers protection act along that, so we would have to discuss that with them. I know in the library report, they did discuss that with Concom and Concom thought that they could work with them.
And Historic District Commission as well.
That's, that, that's my second item, is that would have to be discussed as well about the historic nature of the pool and, and you know, I, I think honestly that if you even going to do something with the pool, I'm not sure that it would be in the same location. So, there will be some discussion with that certainly over, over time.
Absolutely.
The, the next steps, I think, to develop an RFP, to retain a landscape architect, to do the following specifically, update the topographic survey that I have, that I'm not sure if it's exactly correct. I think, I have done some measurements of the site physically myself and by scaling that plan and measuring it on the ground, they're pretty close, so I'm thinking that it's probably fairly accurate. The site hasn't been changed in a long time, but it certainly would have to be verified before we could move forward. Develop some alternatives for the site, as I mentioned. Some other ideas, the pool, where the field should be, the choices of where the field should be in the pool and what type of pool or, pool is maybe not the correct word, what type of facility maybe is a better word to use. Layouts, bathhouse, parking, accessibility, some security, provide conceptual cost estimates for all those alternatives. And I have spoken to a consultant who estimated the cost of both the topographic survey and that preliminary report, which is really a conceptual plan, I think, which will give us some hard numbers, some, I think will give us a lot of basis for discussion about what the choices are and what they will cost, so that the town can then choose to decide if it moves, which is to move forward.
I think you wanted to.
Yeah.
We got, we got an email from Mike Smith.
We did get an email from Mike Smith of the Historic District Commission. He asked it to be summarized into tonight's record, so let me just do that. He wants to thank Peter Castenino for advocacy on behalf of the pool facilities, which you have been doing for many years. He also however wants to make clear that the, that the Historic District Commission believes that this is an historic facility. It is listed on the Massachusetts Historic Commission's inventory of historic resources, citing significance as the first outdoor pool in the country. We're not sure that's actually true, but that's what the Historic District Commission has said and it certainly is a very old and, and.
It eliminates some of the current open space that's there, that's used somewhat, although I don't think it's used greatly to my knowledge. Impacts the neighbors, noise, parking, visual, as I mentioned. It does require the removal of some mature trees in the center, in the tot lot I mentioned already.
I guess at this point, it's difficult to tell how many would be lost.
I think most of them would have, I think most of them would be lost. But certainly, they could try to save a few of them.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that's possible depending on where the walls are installed and that sort of thing exactly. And eliminates the occasional outdoor ice skating in the lower area. There is some occasional outdoor ice skating in that depressed area right adjacent to Conca Dab, between Conca Dab and the pool. It's not that often because the conditions have to be real. We flood that area, but it has to stay very cold, not a lot of precipitation. Some people use it occasionally, but it's not a major use by any stretch of the imagination. Couple other things I'll mention that aren't on my list that have come up since I did this. Is certainly, we'd have to discuss this with Conservation Commission. Because the lower area adjacent to where the brook goes into the grate behind the library, there is the hundred-foot rivers protection after along that. So we'd have to discuss that with them. I know in the library report, they did discuss that with CONCOM. And CONCOM thought that they could work with them.
And Historic District Commission as well.
That's my second item, is that would have to be discussed as well about the historic nature of the pool land. And, you know, I think honestly that if you even gonna do something with the pool, I'm not sure that it would be in the same location. So there will be some discussion with that certainly over time.
Absolutely.
The next steps, I think, to develop an RFP, to retain a landscape architect, to do the following specifically, update the topographic survey that I have, that I'm not sure if it's exactly correct. I think, I have done some measurements of the site physically myself. And by scaling that plan and measuring it on the ground, they're pretty close. So I'm thinking that it's probably fairly accurate. The site hasn't been changed in a long time. But it certainly would have to be verified before we could move forward. Develop some alternatives for the site, as I mentioned. Some other ideas, the pool, where the field should be, the choices of where the field should be in the pool and what type of pool or, pool is maybe not the correct word. What type of facility, maybe is a better word to use. Layouts, bathhouse, parking, accessibility, some security. Provide conceptual cost estimates for all those alternatives. And I have spoken to a consultant who estimated the cost of both the topographic survey and that preliminary report, which is really a conceptual plan. I think, which will give us some hard numbers, some, I think will give us a lot of basis for discussion about what the choices are and what they will cost. So that the town can then choose to decide if it moves, which is to move forward.
Think you wanted to.
Yeah.
We got an email from Mike Smith.
We did get an email from Mike Smith of the Historic District Commission. He asked it to be summarized into tonight's record, so let me just do that. He wants to thank Peter Castanino for advocacy on behalf of the pool facilities, which you have been doing for many years. He also, however, wants to make clear that the Historic District Commission believes that this is an historic facility. It is listed on the Massachusetts Historic Commission's inventory of historic resources, citing significance as the first outdoor pool in the country. We're not sure that's actually true, but that's what the Historic District Commission has said. And it certainly is a very old and historic facility. Also for architectural reasons as well, because of the Underwoods having designed it. And it also has been obviously ongoing in the same place since nineteen twelve, in spite of the changes in the nineteen thirties. What the Historic District Commission would like to do is to be involved in this studying.
I think they absolutely should be, without question.
And they are, their initial position is that more study is needed on options for replacement or repair of the pool and bathhouse, options for a relocated soccer field and so forth. So it basically, they want to see all of these options, I think, at least test.
Yeah, and I think what Michael said, thank you Ralph for that, appreciate it. Is, is he suggested that we form a committee and I think we already have a committee. We just don't have representation from HDC. Members of the committee should include representatives from the Recreation Commission. John Owen has been attending our meetings. School Committee, of course, representatives of the School Committee. And this is the, I can't recall what we actually call ourselves. Library site, school, I don't know. It's Field Replacement Library Site Working Group. And we've been meeting for close to a year, I think, on this, or maybe less, for quite some time.
Different variations.
Different variations of members. But clearly, there are members of the School Committee that are part of that. Mike recommends that. Library trustees are intimately involved in that. Capitol Budget Committee, Amory Mahoney, Chair of the Capitol Budget Committee, has attended some of our meetings. The Conservation Commission, David Webster from CONCOM, has been CPA committee. Well, I guess Amory, we wear two hats, but we can reach out to Paul Solomon as the current Chair and ask him. The Parks and Recreation Board, well, I think that's.
That's us.
So I, that's what? That's us, yeah. And DPW, which of course Peter's there. Glenn Clancy attends. So I think that's the committee he suggested we've been meeting. So it seems to me to make sense to have ongoing meetings on this matter and invite Mike or a member of the HDC to attend. Makes sense, gentlemen?
Mike actually called me, Mike Smith, at the end of last week.
Yeah, I think he said that in email, actually, yeah.
And I went, he wasn't sure he could be here. So I went over this proposal in detail with him as well on Friday morning because he was interested in understanding it also, so.
Yeah, of course.
Peter, could you go back to the slide that shows the layout?
Sure.
I just have a couple of quick questions. You mentioned that the groundwater beneath where the pool is now, beneath grade level, is, you know, goes from one to five feet, more or less, you know, there's a profile there.
Yes.
Does that groundwater topography go up the hill as well? So is your expectation that as you move the pool up the hill, there is more, there is greater depth to groundwater at the higher location than there is at the lower location?
That is my expectation. That would have to be verified. But I think the reason is because the brook, this sidewalk right here, that is, appears to be a sidewalk between that depressed area and the pool itself, is actually, that is the box culvert of the brook.
Right.
You may remember the book, most people know the brook comes behind the library is open. It goes into the culvert here and doesn't daylight again until it opens into Claypit Pond.
Right.
This culvert is only approximately four by five inside with maybe a foot thick. So the brook here, the natural level of the brook here is only five or six feet deep. So generally, the level of the open water course is generally the ground, the level of the groundwater in the area. Because the groundwater theoretically is going towards the brook. That's how nature drains the ground. That all said, as I said, it's a great place for a swimming hole because it's right adjacent to the brook, but not for a concrete pool or even a building, as a matter of fact. I was reading the library report today that they talked about. And they talked about putting the library a little higher and on a slab, not building a basement, of course, just because of that reason.
And this location here, you mean?
Right.
When that was the initial site?
Initially.
Okay.
So I would expect, yes. And I would expect as you go up the hill, that the groundwater is much deeper. That would certainly be my hope. And the soils up there were basically sandy loam and soil. So I'm hoping that that would be fairly draining and would not retain a lot of water.
And you mentioned that the pool shown here, the new pool, that rectangle up there is perhaps too big. Is that because, I mean, do we, in doing this concept, Peter, was it assumed that we are trying to build the same size in square footage of surface area of pool or less?
I was not. I would assume it would be a smaller facility overall in terms of square foot area. Because I think, or two separate pools where you'd have a smaller pool for children and a deeper pool for lap swimming or diving or whatever. But I think that that is really, you know, my conception is that the pool takes a lot of space, as it is now. And I think there's a lot of area there. And certainly, if you look at that pool and look up, the pool would take most of that air if you just replicated it.
Right.
The question is, is.
The existing pool looks about the same size as the new pool.
Right. But I'm not sure that I would, I am not sure, and this is the town's decision, obviously, if that pool in its current, certainly not even the configuration, but the area. I'm not sure that's an efficient use of the area. And I think that modern pools are not built like that. And I would think that there would be a different conceptual design.
Sure enough.
That's, that's my, that's my thought. Actually, I have, I don't know, but the, an Olympic-sized pool is actually a hundred and sixty-four feet long by eighty-two feet wide, to give you some sense. It's very, very big, very big-sized pool. And the reason for putting it up there was only to say, this is a really big pool and that fits there. So something, some other combination of facilities probably would fit there or some such, whatever the town chose it to be.
Gives us plenty of room to operate it.
I believe it does. I believe it does. That, that, that space is, I think it's a hundred and forty-three by two ninety-two, something like that. It's quite, quite large.
Thank you, Peter.
Sure.
Peter, very well done. Ralph, do you have any comments at all? So I think, gentlemen, if it makes sense, shall we ask Peter to move forward? So a couple of things. First of all, we need to reconvene the working group, invite members of the Historic District Commission to attend. But in the interim, as before, we, you know, we will meet. Because I think what Mike was suggesting in his email and what we're suggesting here is, we need to engage a landscape architect to give us alternatives or options for consideration. I would like to at least suggest that we at least ask Peter to move forward with an RFP. We're not spending any money. We're just asking to develop an RFP, to retain a landscape architect. We'll continue to meet if it's all the same to both of you. And the working group, I think part of that though as well, Peter, because we've just been working internally, but as we sort of flush out this concept plan, I think we need to develop as a working group, whom else do we need to meet with? Clearly, the residents, CONCOM has attended, but Conservation Commission is represented on the committee. I guess whomever else we think is necessary to engage as, you know, a stakeholder in this concept plan.
I think one of the things that we would clearly add to the mix and the question is, you know, can the pool be rebuilt where it is? And what are some of the challenges with that? And what's their opinion of where it is now? And get a more detailed professional opinion.
And this landscape architect would be able to sort of tell us. I mean, we get professional advice in terms of, could you do it there? Would you even do it there? And if you could do it there.
How much would it cost and what are the challenges?
What the extent of, you know, what, how costly that might be versus, you know, moving. Certainly sensitive to the historic. I mean, we said that from the very beginning, that clearly there's a historic nature to this pool that's been there since nineteen twelve, I think is right?
Yes.
So should we ask Peter to move forward with development and RFP to retain a landscape architect?
And write the scope, that's the key.
Do we need a motion for that?
So move.
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Wonderful work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you very much. Stefan, thank you again for that. Laurie, did you want a question?
I just have a question. Um, in the fact that after our last meeting, we discussed having you and the library board trustees come and talk at a school committee meeting on July thirty-first.
Okay.
Without the whole concept. And this was brought forth at that meeting. So he hadn't anticipated that this.
Okay. No, I'm happy to attend that.
I'm wondering if we can sort of forward with that. I don't know, maybe Peter could also attend.
I actually just scheduled some time off from the twenty-ninth of July to the first of August, actually. A few days I'll be away.
Okay, well.
Coincidentally. I'm afraid.
I think we were anticipating maybe taking a vote. I don't know if we'd be able to do that, but I think there certainly needs.
I'm happy to attend.
I can attend, Laurie, and I will attend. Peter, I don't know whether we could have a surrogate in your place present, someone else that you could inform about this and we can go through it.
Sure.
Clearly, you know, entitled to vacation.
Thank you.
Just a couple, but only a couple.
I was trying to find.
But only a couple of days, Peter, for God's sake. We need you here. You take like a day and a half and get back here for the thirty-first, is that a possibility?
I was trying to find a window where.
No, that's fine, yeah. There's never a window.
Yes.
Laurie, I will be there and we'll make certain that there's someone there to also present thoughts around this for that meeting.
Can I get a copy of that PowerPoint that we can share with the school?
Email it to you?
And I have to say that the School Committee's been terrific in working on this issue and very open-minded, you know, because they're gonna lose a field. If the library does move forward with its citing and its approval in the town, we're losing a field. And I think the board, this board is committed to making certain it doesn't take place. And so we've been talking about the incinerator site for quite some time. There's a lot of question marks there, still on the table. But here's a concept plan that Peter came up with that I think is very viable and could really work to our benefit if we can work through some of the historic nature, Historic District Commission issues and some of the other issues as well. Peter, great work, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much, Peter.
Thank you.
Okay. Running a little clearly behind, though I think we can go through the committee appointments pretty quickly. Our next agenda topic is Economic Development Advisory Committee, La League. Would you like to join us? Any other members of your committee? Does Tommy want to join us or?
Sure.
Hello, Tom Messina. Hello, La League, how are you? Nice to see you again.
Hi, nice to see you all.
Hi, Tommy. How are you? See you. Been a while.
Pleasure. How are you, Tommy? How are you?
How do you do?
Tony, how are you? Nice to see you.
Pleasure. Good to see you again.
Three weeks. Impressive. Okay. I'll get that one. Okay. So it's been about a year since we last met. So we wanted to just take the opportunity to give you a little update on what we've been up to and share with you some thoughts we had about some going-forward plans and make sure we are directionally correct with the mandate that you had envisioned when you had set up EDAC twenty-year and a half ago. So I have a presentation that's about three pages long. Before you all.
Thank you.
Andy?
Thank you very much.
Tony, Tony Stone. You and I can share. Yeah. So we've had a chance with our committee to, you know, work together for the past year. I mean, certainly Andy has been at many of our meetings in his previous capacity as planning board. So he is very familiar with some of the discussions we've had. And, you know, as we've had some time to reflect on, you know, what we've done and so forth, we have some thoughts on how we think we could kind of position EDAC going forward and some of the projects that we would like to entertain and some of the projects we'd like to undertake with your blessing. And again, keeping in mind that, you know, our goal is to make sure that we are aligned with what you envisioned. So with that, we are going to be proposing a slightly revised EDAC structure. So we've been meeting on a bi-weekly basis, for example, and we'd like to drop that to a monthly meeting schedule. We'd like to change our self-organized team to a chair, vice-chair, and a rotating secretary. We'd like to also establish some working teams, and I'll get more into that a little bit, to work on sort of specific projects, which I will list out shortly. And our vision is to divide and conquer. So we'd basically take our committee, create smaller working teams who will work on some prioritized projects that we deem are important at this juncture. And then we would regroup once a month. And then that's a good way for us to move the ball forward by sort of dividing up our team into these little working groups and so forth. So that we can tackle many things that we would be able to do, which we're all working on everything at the same time. So that's kind of the screen.
May I ask about the working groups? I think it's a really nice idea. Sort of charge, and I probably haven't defined which they, what they are at this point, right? But you would charge them to work on certain aspects of, around sort of greater sort of charge for the committee.
Right.
Work on specific components of that.
Right. So that's actually a great segue, Mark, to the second page of the slide, which talks about proposed projects.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So, that's okay. That's okay. You set me up perfectly for that. So, as if we planned it.
Yeah.
So in terms of, you know, proposed projects, certainly this is not intended to be the, you know, end-all for all the projects. But, you know, in listening to some feedback from some guests we've had, you know, over the past year, thinking about what our town might need, what EDAC could do to help, you know, with the agenda for EDAC, the mandate for EDAC, we thought we would undertake some of these sort of major items and the sub-bullets underneath them. Starting with embarking on some listening, which would mean for us to invite some monthly guests, someone from the town, from either one of the business associations, a key developer, a Realtor, some of their, you know, key individuals who know this town, who may be able to give us some of their perspectives on some of the, you know, what they might be hearing on the ground. In terms of, so that's sort of the listening component of some of what we'd like to do. In terms of marketing initiatives, we'd like to, I won't go through all the bullets because they're listed here for you, but we'd like to undertake something that sort of shines some light on Belmont in a very positive way. To sort of, you know, do some chest pounding on some of the great things that one can find in Belmont. You know, a roadmap on how to succeed in Belmont. Perhaps doing, you know, something around a seminar around retail marketing strategies to not only incent others to perhaps come to Belmont, but to also support the people who are already existing businesses in Belmont. So we're trying to straddle both, you know, new businesses and also supporting the existing businesses. So some of our thoughts around marketing revolve around, again, shining some light on, you know, on what Belmont is and why it's so great to be here. In terms of, you know, technology, it's, you know, it's the field that I'm in. We were thinking perhaps we can look into some, you know, infrastructure offerings. Things like perhaps looking at providing internet services or fiber optic capabilities to our existing businesses to, you know, again, incent them to help improve their businesses, their communications with the customers. And this is just high-level thoughts, but again, something on our technology initiatives. In terms of, you know, some of the zoning things, this is certainly not low-hanging fruit, as one would say. But, you know, with the listening, with some of the marketing, it might give us some intelligence about what some of the things are that we might want to consider looking at for potential zoning kinds of issues that might be roadblocks, might potentially be roadblocks for potential, you know, new tenants or new development opportunities in Belmont. So part of our mandate is to evaluate and advise the town on zoning ideas. So we'd like to see how we can push this agenda forward. So it's just, again, some thoughts around that. And in terms of process, you know, maybe we need to start looking at what some other towns do around us. Look at some of their processes and see how we could maybe fast-track certain things, see if things may take too long in Belmont versus some of our surrounding towns. Again, this is an analysis kind of exercise. But again, it's aimed at improving our, you know, businesses' ability to do business with Belmont.
I think this is really well-done and great outline, particularly on the process issue. Because I think all of us probably points of time have heard, whether it's good or not, I have no idea. I can't evaluate it. But, you know, maybe the process needs to be streamlined. Or at least there needs to be somewhat of a centralization in terms of, when a business wants to come to our community, where do they go? What do they need to do? I think we do a terrific job of working with businesses to make certain they get their permits. But the feedback that I've heard is that sometimes it's unclear exactly the points of contact within the community to be able to do that.
So it's, you know, some of those things that are somewhat easy to fix. If we were to have a consolidated, like, here's who you go to, to do, to get certain things out. So it could be something as simple as that. Our goal here, our overarching goal, if you will, is to create some level of predictability for people so that they know where to go to, they know what to expect, they know how long things will take. Because right now, some of the feedback we've heard, whether it's right or wrong, it's still a perception that we should manage, which is, you know, sometimes it's hard to know, you know, how long the process will take or how many steps. And it feels like, you know, you do these three things, now you gotta do these three things, now you gotta do these five things. So we want to improve that predictability for. Yeah. So this is saying, what can we do there to help move this along? So that's what that last bullet is talking to. And the others, you know, with a question mark is, you know, are there any other things which the Board of Selectmen might like us to look into? Is there anything that's been sort of a burning wish on your end and you haven't figured out who should tackle it? And is that something that you'd like to charge us with to move forward? So this is just not for you to answer today, but just something for you to think through.
Okay.
Fair enough?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think that getting feedback from the Belmont Center Business Association, Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think that getting feedback from the Belmont Center Business Association, I don't think there are other associations that are loosely organized. Belmont Center is more formal.
Yeah.
It's important to make certain that our town centers, Cushing Waverly, Belmont Center, other, other commercial areas in town are revitalized. There's a lot of empty store funds that.
Yeah.
We're attracting the kinds of businesses that we want within our community, you know, that can flourish and be sustainable. Uh, you and I have chatted a little bit about that. I think that's a wonderful charge, EDAC. I think when we organized this committee, it was really, you know, a blank sheet of paper. Go off and, you know, you're an advisory committee to this Board of Selectmen. Look at ways to develop, um, revitalize the community, look at economic development opportunities to bring additional tax revenues to our town as well, so.
Yeah.
I think this is a great start.
Yeah, yeah. We, we don't want, uh, you know, we've talked about this extensively at our committee level. You know, we don't want this committee's focus to be exclusively on real estate development because that's a long haul. And there must be other things which we need to discover that we could be doing to tackle some of those low-hanging fruits, but to also do a lot of work around supporting existing businesses. I don't think we have done enough of that as we've gotten off, you know, the starting point. So we're trying to be creative about some of those things that we could be doing right now with, you know, low, low barriers of entry to do some of those things to support our existing businesses so that we retain them and we don't lose, you know, any more, um, businesses, you know, exiting Belmont. So that's what we're speaking to.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
Okay. And in terms of proposed next steps on the last slide, um, we've already met a couple of times with our committee and we agree that this is, you know, feels like the right structure to move forward with. We've reviewed these proposed projects and we'd like to potentially add, you know, new ones as we go along or as we hear from the Board of Selectmen on special things they might like us to look at.
Okay.
We want to prioritize some of our projects and then assign the working teams and assign committee members to the, uh, to these teams to start working on those. One of the things that we could really use the Board of Selectmen support with is to, um, add more bodies to our committee. As you know, this was supposed to be a seventy-nine member team and we've had a couple of people who've left. And, uh, we have not yet, you know, added more people or so.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So I'd like to ask you how.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. I don't know, it's not even on here tonight, right, EDAC? Yeah, okay. So now we're do, we're in the process of doing committee appointments. We have another meeting on August.
If, if it's acceptable to the board, um, what I'd like to do is work with our colleagues like Franklin or like Joanna at the Citizen Herald and start sort of getting the word out a little bit about EDAC. Talk about some of the, you know, exciting projects we want to do and see if we can get people who might want to come out and apply to be appointed to the board.
That'd be great, no. I don't know if we've had any expressed interest in the committee at this point, but, uh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, but we haven't really, we haven't really done one.
What's, what's the current, so, yeah, active members?
We have seven.
So you probably, okay, then we can absolutely do that.
Especially if there were people who had, uh, operating local businesses.
Yeah.
None of us, none of us on, now are existing businesses or people familiar with commercial rental, uh, you know, rates and procedures. Events, disvenues, that would be helpful.
Are there any members from the Watertown Belmont Chamber of Commerce who are on the committee?
No.
No.
Keith Andre might be because he serves on Belmont Savings. They're both members.
Is he a member of the, but is he a member?
Well, the bank is a member.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. We're happy to add new members, more, more legs and arms.
What are you, what are you thinking that would coordinate with them?
Yeah, try to coordinate more with the Chamber of Commerce. I know it's a, it's not a tremendously active organization because if it would, we'd have one of our own instead of, you know, sharing two towns. But nevertheless, they do have meetings and they do, you know, you know, do a lot of exchange of information amongst themselves and I would think getting some of those businesses.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, okay, we'll follow up on that.
Meeting in the spring, uh, along with Sammy Baghdadi and it is heavily dominated, I think, by banks in both towns, but,
Yeah.
you know, they, I'm sure keep their tabs on what's going on in local retail.
And your staff, Jay, you attend the meetings, right?
Yeah, yes, it is.
That's great, yeah, so Jay's important as well.
We do.
I was on.
Yeah, of course.
EDAC as a member of the planning board, as a representative from the planning board for a couple of years, I guess, La League. And, uh, their work is very valuable to the town. I felt that, uh, and I feel like moving in this direction is a positive step, particularly in things that we can do right away. I agree with you. The real estate component of economic development is a long-term, you know, long, long process. And as we all have seen, um, that's harder to do. But things like, for example, right now when somebody applies for a building permit, Glenn and, and other department heads get together with them so that they kind of, you know, ask all the questions and tell them all the things they need. But if EDAC could actually help memorialize that in a document that could be handed out very cleanly and simply to people, um, applying for a permit, that they see that they have to go to this committee and call this number and there's two meetings required or whatever it is.
Yeah.
I mean, right now, it's, it's, you know, and they do a good job of it, I don't know, one-on-one, sitting out in the room kind of thing. But it'd be nice if we had a document that where we could actually
Yeah.
give it to people ahead of time and answer questions earlier. So that's the kind of thing, I think you're right, that we can get more impact out of, you know, in a faster timeframe.
Yeah.
And, and, and not just focus on big real estate.
That would also help us, you know, sort of benchmark, you know, our processes against potentially others to see, do we have unnecessary, you know, time lags and things? I'm, you know, I'm speculating, but that will help us understand
Right, I agree.
some of those things that we can potentially improve. And by improving the timeline, we may have an opportunity to keep someone if we say you'll be done in six months versus we can't tell you when you'll be done. It could be a year or whatever it is.
I agree.
So that kind of thing.
And should there be like one point, I mean, I just think that maybe there should be one point of contact in town.
Yeah.
For new business. I'm sure the town administrator's office gets emails.
Yeah.
My plant seat, I mean, they must get emails, their emails floating all over the place.
Yeah, we had actually talked about that too. I don't know if you remember Andy, but we were calling sort of like an ambassador, uh, kind of role. That says you're a single point of contact and, you know, you go to this person and they're the traffic op. They don't do everything, but they will give you direction.
Have you considered this board, you know, um, as you sort of deliberate on who that, who that would be, which department that should be?
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Did this, did we as a board ever, you know, you mentioned the real estate piece, which is a longer term. But did this board ever advise the selectmen of our findings when initially we had, um, Bob Mahoney?
Yeah, we had a report out.
With the, uh, with the targeted projects.
Yeah.
What the, real estate pieces would be.
Five and a half million dollars in.
I think it'd be helpful, frankly, to revisit that. I mean, I, it was, it was, it was a good report. You know, some of the developments moving forward, other, other aspects of development are not. And, you know, we clearly need more economic development in the community, so. And now that I'm the liaison, I'd love to attend one of your meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
Soon, you know, and bring back to this board information. But I think we should be meeting on a quarterly, but this is an important committee. You know, this board was very committed to forming it and saw the need. Outside of the planning board, because the planning board is more of a regulatory committee, we saw this committee, I think, as one that had a blank slate. Look at all possibilities from an economic perspective. We may not move forward all of the ideas, but at least it'll present to this Board of Selectmen, you know, lots of ways that we can further enhance the economic development within our town, you know? That continues to fit clearly within the character of what we want to be as a town as well.
Okay.
So we, we welcome an opportunity to meet more often with the committee as you, as you launch your working groups. And even if the working groups wanted to come and meet and report out to us, that'd be, that'd be great.
Okay, great.
So we'll look for new members, right? They need more help?
Yes.
If you have any recommendations, La League, please email them to Kelly. If you, if you have people that you know.
Well, just to follow up a little on your, your just, your comment about the commercial development. I think the, we made the report and then I don't know that anything much more is going to come of that because it does, as you say, get into the planning board's jurisdiction.
Yeah.
And there may have been some, uh, concern that we were getting into that area too far.
Yeah, but I think as you, we meet, but Tommy, so agreed, um, and as you, and I know Cushing Square has been, there's been deliberation on that, on that certain weight of status. I know there was a meeting last week or, um, but, but as you, as you meet with us, um, reporting out on all economic development issues, I think makes abundant sense.
And so, for example, the next one that sort of came on the, uh, on the list was the Pure Code, Pure Code site.
Right.
And whether that's something you wanted us to explore, alternate uses, develop feasibility study.
I'd love to take that. I'd love to replace that. I mean, we, it was, as you know, a significant, we considered it for quite some time as a substation site and then because of what happened there and we couldn't come together on appraisal of that property and fortunately, you know, we're now back to Flanders Road and that's all worked out for us. I think this, like, this board is a light board, is very committed to wanting to move forward with Pure Code, but now it no longer is the case. So clearly there's other possibilities there.
Yeah, and obviously, as a long-term proposition, we need to do something about Pure Code.
I agree.
Yeah.
So, I mean, whether we, whether the substation project took the heat off it for right now doesn't mean that from the town's perspective, it doesn't have to be, you know, planned and dealt with and have a vision for.
I think looking at the possibilities there, I mean, you may have a willing seller, I don't know. It seemed to me at the time there was a willing seller, um, but the possibility is there, uh, something to consider. It's also contiguous to our high school campus.
Mm-hmm.
So part of it could enhance that campus as well. It's a possibility, right? Skating rink or other things that come to mind.
But the other one that we talked about was the incinerator. Are you guys far enough down the road on how you're planning to use the incinerator property?
Uh, we've been, we've met a few times on that. We haven't, we can't decide yet. We, we've met on that. There, there. If you have not seen the report, I've seen our meetings, Tommy. There are at least three alternatives that, or four, I guess. One was leave his open space, a second was a recreation field, and it was the, the area that we were looking at to replace the high school field at the library aside across the street. I think that's still on the table, but maybe there's another plan that, that is more viable, as Peter presented earlier. And then there was a solar farm, which I think we learned at the last meeting was not financially viable.
Right.
And the fourth alternative is there's been some expressed interest from private parties.
For potential sale if.
But there's a title issue that we need to clear up or clarify with the state and the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance and our town council, who's here this evening, has been looking to set up a meeting with DECAN. We can't move forward with anything until we get that issue.
So that's like.
Yeah, absolutely. And if there is a private interest, um, financially from, if it works and community agrees that it works in this board, from a financial perspective, it would result in significant capital funds to our town.
Well, that's, I think, where we started.
Yeah.
You know, way back when, we started at looking, I mean, I thought that Bob's analysis was great because I'm not as quick with numbers as he is and he just did a, you know, he looked at the properties and said they would bring in X.
Well, it's that, Tommy, but there's also, um, you know, not to get deep into this because we're digressing a bit here, but we have, um, a landfill stabilization, a cap, we have a stabilization fund established to cap that site, which is close to four million dollars as we speak. If we didn't have to do that and if someone wanted to purchase that land, think about the amount of money that could be infused into this town to be used for capital purposes.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we, we're excited about the possibility, but we have to move forward with DECAN first and see what happens.
But I think that as we move forward with DECAN and then exploring these other options for the incinerator site, that, you know, depending on where it goes, which way, which, you know, avenue it goes, we'd be looking to EDAC to give us their opinion and recommendation as to, you know.
Absolutely.
So I think we all have to stay on top of this.
Well, I know there was an interesting, I, I'll have to get back to this town meeting member, but she came up with an interesting idea and I'll have her send it to you, you know, just for the use of that property.
Okay, sure, yeah. So I don't know when your next, I think you've, maybe you've emailed me or maybe you haven't when your next meeting is.
I have not.
But please let me know. I think it's usually Thursday mornings?
Yes. So I have to do the new schedule, eight AM.
Eight.
Is that too early?
No, that's fine. Uh, the Vision Implement, Belmont Vision Implementation Committee, they meet at seven AM. That was, I couldn't.
Ew.
Possible.
Atrocious.
Yeah, that's, uh.
Yeah.
It's hard to make those kinds of meetings, especially someone like myself. I'm a more a night person, but.
Okay.
Thank you, La League.
Thank you very much.
Tommy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for coming by. So we're right at eight o'clock and I think town council's here and Glenn's here. I know we have committee appointments on our agenda. I really don't want to keep them.
Yeah.
Does that make sense, gentlemen?
I agree.
And I apologize, those of you that are here. Are you here for a particular purpose, Lori, just to listen in?
I have a meeting.
Oh, you didn't have one of your own? Of course, for God's sakes. The one night you don't have a meeting, you're, you're attending our meeting. Okay.
No, I was here for the.
Pools. So I do apologize. We are gonna, I apologize as well, since it is eight PM, um, and we're, we're, we're behind as well. I don't know whether Belmont Commonplace is here. Kelly, are they?
Are you?
Oh, yeah, okay. Uh, perhaps we can meet with that gentleman so he doesn't have to wait through executive session. Then we go into executive session, uh, for two purposes, because I know Diane is coming as well and collect the bargain. And then we, we come out of executive session and do committee appointments.
Yeah.
Does that make sense, gentlemen?
Yeah.
The only, the only logistical issue is that Lisa will, during executive session, may leave the meeting.
I think we've asked her to stay.
Yes.
She doesn't mind staying. I think we asked her to stay and take minutes. Right? She understands this executive session and it's confidential, so I think it's fine for her to stay. Uh, so I think, um, sir, maybe you want to come forward and, um, BelmontOurCommonplace.com, a new web platform, a community initiative for Belmont residents, Mark Palillo.
Hi, Ricky Porco, nice to meet you.
Ricky, how are you? A pleasure.
Andrew Rojas, hi, Ralph Jones, hi. Of course, nice to meet you, Ralph. How's everybody in?
We're well. How are you?
Excellent, I'm well as well, thank you. So before I begin, I'd like to just thank the board for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. So my name is Ricky and, uh, tonight I'll be giving everyone just a short introduction on Belmont.
Did you spell your last name, Porco?
Sure, it's Porco, P-O-R-C-O.
Okay, great.
And, um, tonight I'm just going to be giving a short introduction on Belmont's Commonplace, which we like to call Belmont's first community web platform. It's a free tool for everyone in Belmont. And, um, I know what everyone's thinking right now, what's a community web platform and why do we need it? So I'll start by saying that Belmont Commonplace is like an online bulletin board for people in Belmont to communicate with one another. Pretty simple. Um, to compare it to some other things, it's a little bit more personalized than anonymous classifieds because it's a network of real people here in Belmont who use their real names when they register. It's more purposeful than large social networks like Facebook, Twitter, for example, because it's comprised of people around us who we don't yet have a social relationship with, but maybe through some common grounds and common interests, we may soon start one. And it's more dynamic than just a local news site because it's a communication platform and not just a content generator. So we like to think of it as sort of an integrated solution. A commonplace online that makes it just really easy for neighbors and local leaders to share community information like needs or announcements and, uh, events with the people around them. So why is it important? Because communicating at a local level isn't easy right now. And the only way that we can increase the amount of face-to-face interactions that happen is to make it easier to communicate locally. So I'd like to show you just a few examples of how commonplace works. How do I click?
Is it on your computer or?
Twice, please.
Let me know.
One more, one more. So here's a good example of how it's used. Some neighbors communicating about the mundane, like getting a recommendation for a handyman. Again, this is mundane communication, but it's really helpful for this woman Ellen, uh, who now had, within a couple of days, a bunch of recommendations for a bathroom contractor. And oftentimes, if you could change the slide once more, please, uh, neighbors gather on commonplace to organize action on more important issues, like in this case, an attempt at fixing some public tennis courts. Uh, so this is really cool because otherwise this conversation might not have happened. And, uh, right now we have a couple of people who probably don't know each other, looking to get together to do something positive for the whole community.
Can I, I'm sorry, Ricky.
Sure.
My son understands completely.
Sure.
Clearly, but not, not me. I could just log in and all of a sudden there's topics of discussion on Grove Street and other.
Absolutely.
Works. So the platform's already been established and.
Already been established.
Log in for, if it's a small fee or whatever.
No fee, it's totally free. Um, right now, thanks to a generous research grant from a national philanthropy called the Knight Foundation, we've been able to keep it free. We, we understand that, like, the only way this tool could really work for everybody is if it's free for everybody. And again, that's, that's thanks at the current moment to a generous, uh, research grant.
Oh, okay.
In the future, um, you know, we're not naive to the fact that in order to keep something like this running, there has to be some sort of revenue. Signing up won't be.
Beginning of the next Facebook.
Could be. We hope it'll be better, more purposeful.
Where, where did it start? This didn't start in Belmont. Where did it start?
It started actually, um, our first commonplace was launched in Falls Church, Virginia, uh, where one of our founders, it was his hometown. And, um, we recently moved up here because we operate out of, uh, the Harvard Business School campus has a building called the Innovation Lab, which they call Startup Incubator, basically. And, um, that's where we're operating right now, so we chose to reach out to a number of communities in the surrounding area and the Belmont Vision Committee actually answered the call and, um, approached us about sponsoring the launch of this, this platform in Belmont. So they've been helpful so far.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
No problem. And, uh, so here's another example, uh, the most important types of messages that could possibly be shared. could possibly be shared on a local network are those of runaway cats. And I'm sure everybody's worried about this poor little cat, so if you could give me one more slide change, please. He was found, which is awesome, and everybody was clearly excited.
Cats always come back eventually, yeah.
I thought so, too. Luckily, luckily, Norman's cat was returned.
Finicky.
So, these examples are just basically some of the ways that commonplace has been used in Belmont, just to add value to individuals live through improved local communication. But it takes more than, you know, a few lost cats to make this useful. And basically, in order to have continued success for this platform, it's really important that it's adopted by the civic leaders in Belmont, such as yourselves. And I'd basically like to close by sending out a call to action to not only you guys, but all civic leaders in Belmont, to join the commonplace, again, for free. And just to use your reach and influence in the community to help us grow this tool into something that can be useful for, for everybody in Belmont.
Okay.
Is the platform moderated?
Yes.
Okay.
It's moderated. A couple of ways that we moderate it. You have to have a street address verified by public data to be able to actually sign on.
Oh, you mean moderator, excuse me, Ralph, if I understand the comment.
Well, a moderator who at least looks at the content on the site.
Absolutely.
Oh, I got it. Yeah, no, that's a good point.
Yep. So, we have a ton of...
Yeah. We don't want it to become something other than it shouldn't be, right?
Exactly. And, and that's try to, where we try to jog on.
Thank you for that. And I noticed I received a, a postcard from you guys.
Yes.
Very nice postcard, actually.
Thank you.
Yeah, good job. And it said that you had a team of residents working with you.
Yes, that's the Belmont Vision Committee is, is, is our team of Belmont residents. And we're always putting out the call to any interested people who have heard about the platform and want to contribute that obviously aren't part of that sponsoring organization, that's the Belmont Committee. But for the purpose of bringing the platform to Belmont, it wasn't just like a random thing that we decided Belmont's close, let's go there. It was, it was because of this interaction with the Belmont Committee that they said we would love to help you launch this program in Belmont.
Okay, great.
And so, you're working with them? And I'm looking at some emails, Ralph. I think I've gotten some emails on this. I apologize. I probably haven't responded to.
No problem.
Okay.
Great.
Well, thank you, Rick.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I'll know where to post things if, if I ever buy a cat and lose it.
Yes. Thank you very much, guys.
Okay. Appreciate that. I apologize to folks in the audience. We are gonna move into executive session. We have our town council here and Glenn Clancy. And actually, there are, there are two components of executive session this evening. One is an executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. The chair that clears that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, and that's what Mr. Hall and Glenn Clancy are here for. And then we also have Diane Crimmens, who's here to give us an update on collective bargaining discussions and negotiations. So, with that, I'll ask for a motion to move into executive session for purposes, for those two purposes. We will then come out of executive session, hopefully by 8:30, or a little after 8:30, since we're starting late, to conduct committee appointments, which I think should go fairly quickly. And then we have some other town administrator's report and some actions by consent in writing. So, with that, do I have a motion to move into executive session?
So, move.
Any, any real call vote?
Andy Ross, aye.
Ralph Jones, aye.
Mark Palillo, aye.
Okay.
Okay, we're back in open session. Just came out of executive session. And the agenda topic, they were supposed to be at 7:30, now we're going to convene on at 9:10, and that is committee reappointments. And Kelly, you were kind enough to outline all those for us, so we can go down the list. Now, Kelly, if I understand, now, August 6th, it seems to me that we could do appointments for vacancies, right?
Yeah, it's actually...
Rather than waiting for the 13th? Is that a possibility?
It's a possibility, yes. If there are, if there are some...
Hopefully, there's interest in appointments.
Yeah, I would say that, depending on the number of applicants for each committee, and if there's any deliberation that's necessary, we could meet in open session or a regular session instead of a work session on the 6th, if you'd like.
All right. So, I think you've laid it out here for, are we doing Belmont Housing Trust? There's three reappointments.
Aye.
Ralph?
Aye.
Did we have some carryover as well from last time?
I don't think so.
No?
I think these are fun.
But they're all integrated together.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
I think you have it there.
I do. All right, so...
Belmont Housing Trust, there's Helen Baikman, Alyssa Gardner, Hodriss, and Anne Verley.
Yes.
So, move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the...
Excuse me. Is there a sheet with the names?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, this one has it right here.
Here, I have it.
Thank you.
The next committee is the Belmont Vision 21 Implementation Committee. There's two reappointments. Sarah Masucci decided not to continue. So, we have two individuals, Paul Solomon and Jennifer Page.
Yes.
Have a motion to reappoint?
So, move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm sorry. If you wouldn't mind, I need to clarify one of the motions. If you could do two separate motions, there's actually on the Vision 21 Implementation Committee...
Oh, is there, is there term or this term?
Yeah, one of the terms should actually be, so, so Jennifer Page's term would expire in 2015, however, Paul Solomon's term would expire in 2014.
Oh, okay.
And that will allow us to get back to the original intent of the rotations. So, if you wanted to do two separate motions for that, Jennifer Page would be through 2015.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we...
Sure.
So, do I have a motion to appoint Jennifer Page for a term of three years through 2014?
Yep.
Twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen, excuse me. Sorry.
So, move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you said Paul wants to be appointed to 2014?
Yeah.
Have a motion to reappoint Paul Solomon to Vision 21 Implementation Committee for a term of two years to 2014.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, Sarah Masucci has, it says relocated. She's leaving the community?
She is.
It says relocated.
Oh.
Is she leaving town?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That's too bad. Cultural Council.
We're skipping the council on aging.
Oh, sorry.
I, and I don't have that in front of me, so I...
Council on Aging.
Yeah, there I do.
On this one, we...
Yeah.
We have two vacancies to be filled on August 13th, but tonight, we have a one person nominated.
I'm sorry, Ralph. Can we go back for a moment?
Yeah.
I apologize. I think the order that I have in the agenda is Cable Television Advisory Committee, which I think is next.
Okay, that's funny.
Yeah.
It's not on here, so...
Not on here, yeah.
The Cable Television Advisory Committee. Board. Do not reappoint Barry Blesser? I'm not certain.
Let me, let me get my stuff.
Kelly, sorry about that.
I jinxed myself when I said I wanted this to...
Over here, it says resignation of Barry Blesser.
Barry Blesser, Televi, oh, I, okay. Let me explain. We had him on our list for reappointment, but apparently, he is not interested in the reappointment. So, we will have one vacancy to advertise, and so that would be put on the agenda for the August 13th.
This committee is two people? That's it? What is it? I'm sorry, what does it do?
I think these are the two that are appointed by the board.
Oh.
So...
Okay.
So, I will add this to the August 13th list of appointments.
Of appointments, right.
All right.
Okay, good.
Cultural Council is next. There are recommendations for four reappointments.
Yeah, I only see three here. Wait a minute. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I've got four.
Christine Zandevic and Quirk, who's current chair, Rebecca Richards, and Ken Stahlberg. Do I have a motion to reappoint those individuals?
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I guess Sarah Freiberg and Sarah Ruya are not being...
Are not being reappointed.
Which means that there's a vacancy, right?
There'll be two, two new vacancies for August 13th.
All right. Now, we're on Seaway, Ralph.
Okay. Apparently, there's only one recommendation for now, and then there'll be two vacancies to be filled on August 13th.
So, Cornelia Hegarty and Ian Louis, Ian Louis...
Hughey.
Hughey, excuse me. Hughey, apologize, Ian, is retiring.
Yeah.
So, do I have a motion to reappoint Michael Callahine?
So, move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. So, there are vacancies there as well?
Right, yeah.
Yes.
So, on Human Rights Commission, two do not reappoints, which creates two vacancies, Elavie Kari and Rosalyn Cabral, and recommendations to reappoint Paul Solomon and Kyle Brower. Do I have a motion to reappoint?
Yeah.
Individuals.
So, move. Human Rights Commission.
Human Rights Commission.
So, move.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At least I know we're moving quickly. I apologize.
Yeah.
Apologize.
Lisa, I'll work with you afterwards.
Local Emergency Planning Committee. Wow. What a terrific list of individuals here. There are recommendations to reappoint three individuals. Edward Corsino, David Frizzell, the Chief of Fire, Leo Sednaway, of course, or emergency medical...
Actually, four.
Yeah, Michael Santoro, four. Yeah, four.
So, move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
MWRA Advisory Board, motion to recommend Peter Castellanos' reappointment.
Oh, so, move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yet the motion's here, Kelly. This is really well done. So, on the Property and Casualty Insurance Advisory Committee, there's a recommendation to reappoint John Barelli and do not reappoint Robert Massey. Apparently, he's not, not asked to be reappointed, which creates one vacancy. Do I have a motion to reappoint John Barelli?
So, move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Franklin, I know this is riveting, so, yeah.
Mark, can we just stop for one second?
Of course, can.
Did we do, we just did property?
We did property and casualty.
Did we, we didn't do the municipal light board?
No.
No, somehow I missed that.
So, we didn't, we did Mr. Castellanos to the MWRA.
The light board is recommended to be postponed until the 13th.
The light board one is gonna be August 16th, or wherever that is?
August 13th.
13.
Oh, is that, yeah, I guess I'm looking at my packet. Did I go over that too quickly?
Yeah, this says reappointment deferred.
Oh, okay. So, the advisory board will do on either the 6th or the 13th, Lisa.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. I know we want to get through it, but just...
Why is it being deferred?
Haven't heard back from Mark McVeigh.
Oh, okay. He's done great work on that committee.
Yeah.
Okay. Recreation Commission, oh, there's some vacancies. David Kane...
Is the only one.
Is looking to be reappointed, and Andrew Levin and Elizabeth Lipson are not being reappointed. Do I have a motion to reappoint David Kane to the Recreation Commission?
So, move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The Shade Tree Committee, you served on that, right?
I did, for a bunch of years.
Recommendations for reappointment of Nancy Forbes and Laura Simmons, the current chair.
Doesn't look like it. The motion says only Laura Simmons. Which is it?
Reappointment deferred to August 13th, waiting on response from someone. Okay, should we defer then? Why don't we defer?
We can defer that one. It's a little bit longer.
Your name is still on the website.
Well, should, should, on the Shade Tree Committee, should, I think, on the bottom of that sheet, it says move to reappoint Laura.
Yeah, that's all it says.
So, can't we...
We can do that.
Let's reappoint her and leave one open for...
Yeah. I guess we're waiting to hear back from Nancy.
From Nancy, yeah.
So, do I have a motion to reappoint Laura Simmons?
Laura Simmons?
So, move.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The website has, still has your name on it here, 2011. Your term has expired.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Traffic Advisory Committee, they do a lot of good work. Formerly the chair. So, reappointment of Linda Nickens, who's the current chair, Peter Coro, and Dana Miller. Do I have a motion to reappoint all three?
So, move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I think that's it for tonight. I have to, Kelly, I mean, I think you and the...
Yeah. Thank you.
Adriana and Glenn, or whomever. It's very well organized. Thank you very much.
Better than ever.
We should apologize if we went too quickly on that.
Okay, I'll catch up.
But we moved through that pretty quickly. So, okay. We have, gentlemen, sorry. Actions by consent. Let's do the, that, and then we can do actions by writing, and that will do it. So, actions by consent, there's minutes from the 4th, May 4th, May 14th, May 21st, and July 2nd.
Move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Actions by writing, why don't we start with the traffic control agreement? So, we have Mr. Clancy provided to this board three traffic control agreements in executive session for us to agree and approve, to sign for the Tripella Road project. Do I have a motion to approve these traffic control agreements?
So, move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. For the listening audience, these are basically agreements that we will maintain traffic control improvements that are made along with the federal and state funds for Tripella Road.
Thank you, Ralph, for... Sir? It's Ralph. It's signed.
Okay, there's one, there's another completed one, and Ralph's gotta sign this one.
And I think we have other actions by cons, writing. There's two collective bargaining contracts. We discussed in executive session. Kelly, do you have those contracts?
Mm-hmm.
One is with the Patrolmen Union for fiscal 2011. Do I have a motion to approve that contract?
So, move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The second, yes?
Do you want to make the motion for, specifically for FY 11?
Yes, we did. Fiscal 11, I think I said that.
Yes.
years 2012, 2013, and 2014. Do I have a motion to approve that contract?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Ross?
Is that acronym S C I U?
No, no.
S E.
S E I U.
Service Employees International Union, formerly the, Building Service Employees International, formerly Elevator Operators.
Mr. Jones has extensive years of experience in his role as...
Correct.
...committee on a lot of collective bargaining.
My research from graduate school.
Research, oh, really?
Yeah. They used to be the Building Service Employees.
Oh, it did?
Yeah.
That's interesting.
And then they expanded out and got into...
Cafeteria.
Yeah.
Librarians.
Lots of them.
Librarians.
Health workers, 1199.
Kelly, that leaves two topics. Town Administrator Report, I don't want to shortchange anything that you wanted to report out to this board this evening. We have covered a lot of items tonight, and I guess any topics for future discussion.
Okay.
Kelly, anything to...
I just wanted to close out another issue that was brought up at one of the previous meetings with follow-up to the advanced life pers, advanced life support ALS contract with Professional Ambulance. Had the chance to meet with Fire Chief Frizzell, and we talked through some options for next steps for the board. I just wanted to give you a quick update on that and some background information. Essentially, if you want to pass the memo, just as, just as a quick summary, all I've done is give you some backup, but essentially, what we'd like to do is set up an in-house committee consisting of myself and/or permanent town administrator, and our town accountant, and Chief Frizzell, and also our representative from Professional Ambulance to meet on a regular basis, to come up with some reports, compile some data, come up with some recommendations that we could report back to the board, perhaps as early as, you know, September, October. We could come up with, collect all the data for your consideration, come up with a report, and then give a presentation to the board at one of the fall meetings with proposed next steps. So, this would be to allow the board to have all the information it needs to make a decision with regards to whether or not we do want to move forward and propose an in-house ALS service for the town.
Thank you.
I can tell you also, as a quick update, the ambulance revenues for this fiscal year, I believe for FY 12, I think we originally projected them to be $330,000 for projected revenue, and actually, I believe at the close of the fiscal year, we were looking at about $150,000 in, in revenues that have actually been collected. So, those...
You mean $550,000?
$550,000 for collective revenue. Certainly more than what was projected, and one of the advantages we'll have with evaluating this ALS proposal is, is that we'll have a lot better data to work from. In the past three years, that this has sort of been discussed, we have some very good information, and our affiliation with Professional Ambulance has been so far very good and very proactive. So, we'll be able to sit down with them and capture a lot of the data that will help us to determine feasibility moving forward, and how we might best utilize our current fire suppression personnel, who are also working EMS and basic life support, to expand that potentially into advanced life support. So, we'll have that data to support and to present.
So, the working group, thank you very much, Kelly, that's great to know. The town administrators' office, or yourself at this point, you know, possibly Mr. Cale as well, Fire Department and the Accounting Department, I think that's a fine working group. Gentlemen, you agree?
I agree, sounds like the right way to go, the next step.
I'm sure Chief Frizzell has told you, there's been a lot of work that's been done on this matter, there was a committee that's probably still standing, working group at some point that I was a member of.
We did review all that information.
Yeah, I don't know whether, I was just going to comment that, I don't know whether any of that historical information would be helpful to look at, it's probably dated at this point in time, but, so we look forward to it.
Yeah, we, we did have the opportunity to meet and to review all of that information, and again, three years later, I think we have a lot more data that we can use...
Okay, cool.
To, you know, make a good presentation to the board. You know, for the most part, I, I think that, you know, is, we've been really working very hard to try to finish up the committee appointments.
Yeah.
And so, hopefully, by the end of, by the August 13th meeting, if not before, we'll have a chance to wrap that up.
That's great.
And then in the fall, as we go forward, LaLigue was talking about the Economic Development Advisory Committee. I see our role in the office is really to try to strengthen their ability and their